You know what, we have our Father in our midst tonight. We are so privileged that He is here. And I would like to take advantage of the fact that we have our Father here. To give us some words, to address us as Nigerians in diaspora. To direct us on how to behave. Our Father, the Royal Highness. Please indulge us, sir. To the podium, sir.
Yes, I am so sorry.
Your Royal Highness. Your Royal Highness. Our top officials of Nigerian spies. All us of the Nigerian community all gathered here this evening. I know the program has been fundamentally changed. Because we are in our midst of special guests. Not just a special guest, but a special son of Africa. We are in our midst of the former governor of the Central Bank of Nigeria. We are in our midst of the former Emir of Kano. We are in our midst of the leader of the Tijaniya Sufi Muslim sect in Africa. A sect that comprises over 60 million Africans. We are in our midst of an educationist, an author, a writer, a researcher, a top intellectual. And I must confess to all my brothers and sisters here. When I got to his hotel and I told him, "Your Excellency Nigerians, I want you to come share some few words with them." He said, "See, I just returned from my MTM board meeting. I am tired." And I said, "Your Excellency, I plead. Nigerians won't understand this. Please, sir." He had to go back in dress to come out and meet with you. So today is a special night for Nigerian spies. Today is a special night for Nigerians. And His Royal Highness is here today to speak to us about unity, about Nigeria, about ourselves. We all come from a country that is special. We all come from a country that is blessed by God, by Allah. Nigerians are never mourners. We don't cry over anything. We rejoice even when we bury the dead. Nigerians don't mourn for too long. Whatever we're going through today, we're simply going through a process of evolution. It will pass someday. And with leaders like His Royal Highness here to guide us, to advise us, to chart a course for us, I assure you, we should look forward to a better country, to a better Nigeria. I'm not sure I'm in a good position this evening to tell you everything I should tell you about His Royal Highness. But one point I must stress. His Royal Highness has been ranked amongst the top 100 human beings. By Forbes. By Forbes magazine. If there's anybody here who has better knowledge about His Royal Highness, I'll give him the opportunity to speak before His Royal Highness speaks. But we are honored to have in our presence special guests, guests we should celebrate. Your Royal... Sir, there is nobody who... I must confess to all of you, there is nobody here that can speak. That can be as oratorical, as articulate as His Royal Highness. He has that special gift. I will just appeal to all of us to listen carefully to the message he has to share with us. I thank you all, Your Royal Highness.
Excellency, sit down. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. You know, His Excellency Consul General, I know all the tricks of the diplomats. My father was a diplomat. So he promised me I would be here for five minutes. And then he stands up and starts talking about oratory and eloquence, trying to compel me to give a long speech. And I'm not going to give a long speech. As His Excellency has explained, I didn't have this in my program. I spent the whole... I spent the whole week actually in meetings. And just as I returned to my hotel and relaxed, he said he was coming to see me. And then he came and said there were Nigerians who were waiting to meet me. And anyway, I'm pleased to be with you. I'm pleased to share a few moments with you. Look, it's important what you're doing, which is having an honest conversation among yourselves. Because very often, people don't realize that when you are in denial, then you will never find a solution to your problem. Okay, so if you have a problem, you have a problem. You don't go around blaming everyone else. They don't like us, they hate us because of the color of our skins, because of our passport. It is true, there are people who don't like you because of the color of your skin, there are people who don't like you because of your passport. But you must also be honest and accept if there are things that you have done which have placed you in this situation. We're not the only black people in the world. Yes, we are the largest population of black people. And I think it's important to have perspective. I keep telling people that we are a nation of 200 million. The African population is 1.2 billion. So one out of six Africans is Nigerian. It's true, if you find a simple law of statistics, a simple law of probability, if a crime is committed anywhere in the world, there is a one out of six probability that the criminal will be a Nigerian. That's a lot. But at the same time, if you find a doctor in America, or an engineer in America, or a computer scientist, or a space engineer, there is a one out of six chance that he'll be a Nigerian. Which is why you have more Nigerian medical doctors in America, in the United States, than any other nationality. But people talk about the criminals, they don't talk about the medical doctors they have. They don't talk about the professors, they don't talk about the engineers. Because bad news travels fast. And this is the reality of human nature. And most people forget that, that it is the exception that often becomes the rule. I always give an example to my children. See, when you come out, everybody is cheering you, everybody is cheering you, there are hundreds of faces, you don't recognize the faces, you just see a mass of people. If just one person... You know, in Nigeria, we do this to abuse. If just one person were to do this, you would see his face. You would remember his face, you would recognize him. It is human nature. If you have 100 honest Nigerians, people don't notice because they expect people to be honest anyway. Okay? One criminal, that's what you notice and that's why you pay Nigerians. So it's important, I think, that we get away from this idea of there are a few bad eggs. No, no, no. One bad egg is one bad egg too many. So that's the first point I think we need to bear in mind. So there's nothing like a minority when it comes to your reputation. If you have 10 children and one of them becomes an armed robber, it doesn't matter what the other nine are. You know that? Everyone will be talking to you about you as the father of an armed robber. If you'd like, let the others be policemen catching armed robbers, let them be judges, let them be lawyers, let them be... That one armed robber is the one that defines you. And it's true of the whole country. So we get painted by this brush and it is not a good brush. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we do say charity begins at home as a proverb, but it is also the truth. The reality is, no matter what ordinary Nigerians do, what we do as leaders has a greater impact on the image of the country than ordinary people. And we therefore have to be members of a civil society that tries to call political society to order. If you have a democracy, you have free and fair elections, you have good governance, that alone goes a long way in improving the image of the country. If the news coming out of the country is always bad, about political thugs breaking ballot papers, about senior politicians taking bribes and being appointed to public office, it gives the impression that this is a country where everything goes. Yesterday, I was speaking to someone who used to be president of Nigerian Bar Association, and we're talking about corruption in the judiciary. And he said, "A few years ago, I was at an international conference in Dubai presenting a paper. And the chairman of the panel was a former law justice in the United Kingdom. And in conversation, I told him that there are some judges, there was a case, I think, of Supreme Court of judges in Nigeria taking bribes, corruption in the judiciary. And he almost passed out. He said, "Look, maybe this happened in the 19th century or in the UK. But it is just inconceivable. He can't even imagine that anyone in the UK would even think about bribing a judge." Okay? And even here in South Africa, with the state capture, with everything that has happened, you still have a judiciary that can jail a former president. This is Africa. Now, if the judiciary, which is supposed to be the last bastion of the human man, of the human being, where you're supposed to have the highest levels of integrity and incorruptibility, if it allows itself to be so damaged, what happens to all other institutions? So we have to take an interest in what happens at home. And we have to raise our voice against that because at the end of the day, you're outside but you also have to say, "Look, you people back home, please stop doing this, you are making life difficult for us here." Because of course, when we come out, now we can talk about it as Nigerians, if I go out and some South African tells me Nigerian judges are corrupt, I'm going to tell them it's a lie. I'll say it's not true. We have to defend our country. But the reality is, among ourselves, we have seen these things and we're the age of social media, there is nothing that is a secret anymore. So that's my second point, that what happens at home, what the leaders do, what... And when I say leaders, I count myself as one of the leaders, as a governor of Central Bank, as an Emir, as Khadifa, I count myself as a leader. What we do has an impact on the image of the country, perhaps far, far more than what... I mean, what one person, one governor, one minister, one Emir can do more damage to our reputation than 100,000 ordinary people. Okay, so it's important that those who we take to leadership. And then we start asking ourselves, "How do we select our leaders? What is the qualification to be a leader? What kind of system have we set for ourselves?" And I'll tell you a story. I have these stories in my life that give an insight into how things go wrong. So when I was in the Central Bank, the Human Resources Department came up with... They said that we needed to have minimum qualifications for employment as drivers in the Central Bank. And they said, "Minimum is that a driver should have attended secondary school." Okay? Just to evidence I attended secondary school. And in the meeting, I said, "But why just attend? Why can't we ask for at least two credits? Or credit in English?" And I was furious, I was going on, "No, he must have one or two credits, you can't just say attend secondary school." One of my deputy governors laughed, said, "Governor, this qualification is what you need to be the president of Nigeria." I'm telling you, the qualification to be president of Nigeria is the qualification written, if you go to the Central Bank, the qualification you need to be a driver in the Central Bank. Anybody who has gone through secondary school, with or without credit, whether or not he studied, whether he was F9 throughout, so long as he shows paper that he went through secondary school, can contest for president, for governor, for senator, for House of Reps. When you already set your standard so low, the bar is so low, what quality are you likely to get? Let's ask ourselves. The economy, people complain on the cost of governance. So much of the money that goes to Nigeria is spent on public servants, it is true. But we have a constitution that says, "You have a president and a vice-president. You have 36 governors and 36 deputy governors. You have 36 houses of assembly. You have 774 local governments with a chairman and vice-chairman and 10 councilors and a By law, the president must appoint at least a minister from every state of the federation." And they've said, "Whether or not we need 37 ministers, we must have minimum of 37 ministers." Do the arithmetic. Each of these people will have an SA, a special assistant, personal assistant, official car, a driver, security, accommodation. Is there any surprise that the Nigerian embassy in South Africa does not get money? I mean, look, it's simple arithmetic. And we keep that constitution. Every four years, we go and elect people to fill those offices. Every time you have national assembly, they order Jeep. And that car, they must have the same car. Doesn't matter whether you've had a devaluation and an increase in price, and the price is now triple what it was, that car that my predecessor had, I must have. 360 members of the House of Representatives, 109 senators. You know, they need Jeeps to do their work. Why did you contest an election? You applied for the job. And suddenly you now tell, "You know, I need it." If you knew you didn't have a car to do the work, why apply for it? Why can't we have a unicamera legislature? Why do we need a bicamera legislature? Why do we need seven... Why can't we just have the states and have a Ministry of Local Government? Why do we need 774 local governments? And we have elections for those local governments. And we're surprised that we don't have money invested in education. We don't have money invested in healthcare. And if for 10 years, 20 years, you've not invested in primary education and secondary education, then you're looking at your youth, who are teenagers, and you're shocked that they are thugs when you did not educate them. Because every time we are thinking of the next election, we're not thinking of the And something else. And I'm still talking about structures, I'm talking about structural problems that we're not talking about. You know all this noise about Yoruba ibo Hausa? It misses the point. And I've always said it, that for me personally, I'll be the first person to go to war if you say I'm going to divide Nigeria. Because I don't even know which box are you going to put me in. Seriously. Yes, my parents are from Kano, and they're Muslim, and I'm a Muslim, yes. So when I was eight years old, I went to a Catholic school, boarding school for primary So all those sisters and reverend fathers who brought me up and who took care of me and who loved me, I now go and fight them because they are Catholics. Then I went to King's College and all my friends that I've met. Right now, I'm living in Lagos, in a house provided for me by my friend who is a Christian from Abia. So what... Who am I fighting? Who am I fighting? My daughter is getting married next year to a Yoruba boy from Quara. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we don't realize the value of being in a country of 200 million and all the opportunities that it provides. And when you start dividing, how are you going to divide? When all these groups, you know, when people talk about nationalities, we don't even know our history. All these ethnicities that we say ethnicities, the ethnicities themselves were constructed What is Niger Delta? People say I'm from the Niger Delta. No, seriously. In our lifetime, Ijor were killing Ishakiri, Ogoni. This one in Anambra, Omuleri and... What is ethnicity? Before the Jihad of Othman and Fodio, Kano was at war with Katuna, Katuna was at war with Zaria, Zaria was at war with Gopil. They did not call themselves Hausa. There were Kanawa, Kasanawa, Zazagawa. It was constructed by the Jihad. After the Jihad, the British came, they put together all sorts of... And said, "This is called Northern Nigeria." Then we now became Northerners. They say Yoruba, before the British came, it was Ijebu, Ondo, Akoko, Ekiti. At war with each other. Even when I was in King's College, somebody likes when they say Ijebu. I mean, they wouldn't say Yoruba, if you say Yoruba, they say Ijebu. You know, so we just... I mean, if you talk about these things for history, that's fine. But if you say you want to divide Nigeria, how do you divide Nigeria? Into what groups and how... Into how many nations? I tell you, give the Niger Delta a country and come back out. Look at Sudan. I was in Sudan for 40 years. Southern Sudan fought and fought and fought and fought. They broke away. When they broke away, they started fighting among themselves. The North now is fighting among itself. Now in Hattum, they are fighting Arabs and Arabs. Once you get into this sense, that the way to fix a nation is to destroy it, you'll keep destroying. So that's my third point. A final point is, someone spoke about values. And this is, I think, the most essential thing for all of us as human beings. If you don't have a set of values that you hold on to, and that's the yardstick by which you judge other human beings, you judge yourself and you judge other human beings, then you're in trouble. Many people do make, I keep saying, they do make a distinction between what they are and who they are. See, we're all Muslims and Christians. And in our faiths, we believe that what you are, you have to go control over. You can try. Please, what role did you play in becoming a Hausa man or Ibo man? What role did you play? Did you ask God before your father met your mother that you want to be Ibo or you want to be Hausa? You just found yourself. And you may have been born into a wealthy family that gave you an education, while somebody else was born to a poor family that could not educate him. What role did you play in being born into that family? What was your achievement? What was your contribution? But we also believe as Muslims and Christians that even what we achieve in life, much as we attribute it to ourselves, is beyond our control. You take two people with the same level of education, doing the same thing, one succeeds, one fails. How do you explain it? Give two of your children the same amount of capital, put them in the same business, one is rich, one is... Give two of your children the same amount of capital, put them in the same business, one is rich, one is poor. How do you explain it? But we define ourselves by what we are. I'm Hausa, yes. I'm Fulani, I'm Ibo, yes. Yes. Or I'm the owner of that big house. Yes. I own that car. I have so much money in my, that is all what you are, not who you are. If you steal money and you are multi-billionaire, yeah, what you are is a multi-billionaire, who you are, a thief. That's who you are. You are a thief. Or a liar, or a drug dealer, or a murderer, or an armed robber. That is who you are. Now, if you don't know that difference, that is number one. You have not started living life. Because you do not have a standard by which you judge yourself. Where if you say you want to be an honest person, and that's what you want to be, it doesn't matter whether you have, whether you're rich or poor, you're an honest man. And you bring up your children, that the value that matters is honesty. Or generosity. Or kindness of spirit. Or care for the poor, a caring person, respectful person. Decency. Those are what, that's who you are. And if you begin to define yourself by those values, then when I see you, what interests me is, are you honest? Are you decent? Are you generous? I'm not interested in whether you are Hausa or Yoruba, or Ibo, if you are a Hausa thief, or an Ibo thief, or a Yoruba thief, you are all thief. And, you know, but because we have focus on what we are, we lose that. So we've, that's why we've lost the values. That's why we've lost the values. When your children begin to even forget that they're children, and they're thinking, "My father is so, I am the son of XXX." And you don't begin to knock their heads and say, "You are nothing. Go to school first." You know, the Arabs, the Arabs have a saying, they say, that they say, "A real son is not one who says, 'My father was XXX.' A true son is he who says, 'I am XXX.'" You know, when I was in Form 3, King's College, my father became the permanent secretary of External Affairs. And one day, he said to me, you know, "You know, my father is an AMIA. But I don't go around saying, 'I'm the son of AMIA Sanusi.'" When I stand, I say, "I am Ambassador Mohammed Aminu Sanusi, Permanent Secretary of External Affairs." And maybe some people will even be saying, pointing to my father and using reference to me. The worst thing you can do to yourself is go through life, and everybody's pointing and saying, "That is Ambassador Sanusi's son." You have to make sure that people point to you and say, "That is Lamidu Sanusi, and that is what he is." Now you have politicians who came out of nowhere, political thugs, they become governors, they become ministers, and their children are basically running over people all over the country, going all over the world, flying first class, misbehaving. Say to them, "First class, who are you?" "Eh, my father is..." "Who are you?" His father. And that first class ticket is not his father's money, it is government money that the father took, put him on first class. Those are the values that we have lost. But what each of you needs to ask himself or herself in the depth of your heart and shining a light on your conscience, is, "Do I know who I am?" Have I told my children who I am? Or do I just know what I am? Until we all do that, we will not fix Nigeria. Okay, thank you.